Good evening. Welcome to the June 24th Lebanon City Council meeting. Our first order of business will be the allegiance.
Let's just give you a flag of the United States of America. It is a republic which sustains one nation under God.
All right, move on to the roll call members. Madam Clerk, you can call the roll, please.
Mike Kincaid.
President.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Sandra Jasonowski.
Absolutely.
Dick Robertson.
Mayor.
John Copeland.
Here.
Sierra Messenger.
Present.
Robert Hawkins.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we don't have the minutes from our previous meetings. We'll take this up at our next meeting. I'll move on to old business. Nothing on my agenda, anything from council. Okay, new business then. First item up is a consideration of Lebanon Utilities' recommendations to withdraw electric utility from the jurisdiction of the IURC, Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission. We have Ed Vasco to introduce.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thanks for having me again. Today, we're having, as you probably know already, we've got a unanimous, easy for me to say, right? Resolution from the Lebanon Utility Service Board to exit the IURC. I've been before this body and towards the end of March, given a presentation, and this is our first public hearing with regard to exiting the IURC. I have a few slides I was going to show. You've seen these before, but if there's any questions, of course, let me know. And if you can please, yeah, there we go. We call this redefining IURC relationship. Why redefining the relationship? Because we are still going to be under jurisdiction of IURC for transferring territories for everything really except our rates and charges and borrowings. We just recently did a swap that was approved by the IURC with our neighbor utility, Boon RMC, and it went well, and we would continue to do things like that even after we exit IURC jurisdiction for our rates and charges. Well, introduction, the IURC originally wasn't even for utilities, it was to regulate railroads. And when they had the IURC regulate utilities, everyone was automatically default position in IURC for rates and charges. But in 1988, they did legislation where municipalities and RMCs could get out from under that jurisdiction. The logic being that they're not for profit. And the main reason you wanted to regulate a utility was so that if the rates went up, they wouldn't have that money go out in dividends to stockholders outside of Indiana and outside the city. Lebanon Utilities is wholly owned by the city, so our rates stay with the utility, and they go in the projects, and if the rate increase was a tenth of a percent higher this time than it should have been, that means the next rate increase will be a tenth of a percent lower. So we went through a lot of different analysis. Why now? There's changes within the Lebanon community, a lot of development, and I want to show some differences between 2013 and 2024. It was 1913, got a little ahead of myself as far as when they repurposed it to regulate utilities. And majority of the rate cases that the IURCs are for profit utilities. So it's not like if they don't do rate cases for municipalities that they're going to go out of business, or they don't officially have a position where they care whether we're in or out. Until 1988, all utilities were required to have rate adjustments approved by the IURC. But one important fact is that 95% of MOUs or municipally-owned utilities and RMCs opt out of IURC jurisdictional controls. So we're in the minority that we're still in the IURC. Here's the actual numbers. There's actually six under IURC jurisdiction. 116 withdrawn out of a total of 122. That's right, it's 95%. One of the factors that we looked at, because we had many working sessions with the Lebanon Utility Service Board, trying to get a unanimous opinion from our board. We studied this thoroughly, and we compared cost, time, accountability, and debt and borrowing. And it's just a lot more expensive when you're in the IURC, and it takes a lot more time. And there's already two layers of control here with Lebanon Utility Service Board and the City Council. If there's a rate increase, or what would happen is Lebanon Utility Service Board would have to approve it, and it'd have to go to City Council. Also, one thing that surprised to me, I didn't realize until we got in-depth into studying it, is it's actually a negative being in the IURC in our debt and borrowing as far as what our bond rating would be, because they look at that as something you can't control. Right now, some of the drivers have changed for Lebanon. In 2013, the period we're preparing to, there was little bit of no development in Lebanon. I think we all know from prior meetings I've sat with with you guys, significant development. It's never been this much development happening before in Lebanon, I think you could reasonably say. There's also a significant increase in equipment costs. And past it, it really wasn't a concern how much of the developers' costs were built into our rates. Now it really is, when you look at how much transformers cost and how we could equip at the lead times, and the changing environment, we need to change with it. Here's a comparison for transformers. Transformers have just increased dramatically, and the lead times have increased dramatically since 2013. If you look at an industrial 500 KBA transformer, that's many times more. I mean, and these are just the latest estimates from March. The transformer costs are going up as they become more available, the market's getting more elastic, and the prices are actually increasing as the lead times go down. Put another way of looking at it, in 2013, our approved budget was $180,000 for transformers. In 2024, we're looking at 1.5 million. And that would be built into our rates, and what we're looking to do to get out of the IURC is make some changes so that the development pays for development.
So currently today, so if someone says they build a new house in Lebanon, the Lebanon Utilities provide buys and installs a transformer for them versus developer coming in providing it at their cost instead of us?
Yes.
Commission, let us clear.
That's why I changed now. We just back the flexibility. There's a process to exit IURC control. The first part of the process was Lebanon Utility Service Board unanimous approval in March. This is our first public hearing. After I'm done with the presentation, I'm opening it up for questions. There'll be another reading of this the next meeting on July 8th. And we'd ask for Lebanon Utility Service Board, I mean, excuse me, Lebanon City Council approval at that point. And then if there's no challenges after a 60-day period, we send a letter to the IURC, and it'll become final. And as far as the legal process, our attorney, Jeff Jacobs, here, he could probably answer the questions more thoroughly than I could. The Lebanon Utilities' rates are lower than the average of IMPA, where we get our power. They're lower than Boon RMC, and I just picked an IOU or investor-owned utility. So we have low rates, and we're just trying to keep that trend going, or keeping our rates low. And this is just a step we think we need to make in order to keep our rates low with this new environment. This slide's a little busy. Apologize if I can't read every number on it, but I just want to show that across the board, Lebanon Utilities' rates are lower. And this is my last slide. Sorry for the, that's my PowerPoint, but it's complicated stuff. You need to get through it all. These are some of our terms, like KW is kilowatts. Most people don't deal with that every day. Then there's kilowatt-hours. I mentioned IMPA, that's the Indiana Municipal Power Agency, that's where we purchase our power. IURC is the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission. I think I've defined a couple of times, and MOU is a municipally-owned utility. And RMC is a rural electric membership cooperative, our local one being Boon RMC. With that, I would like to ask if there's any questions.
So from our, just to clarify as well, right, our water and wastewater utilities are not part of the IURC as well either, correct? Nor are telecom.
That's a great question. The wastewater is not governed by the IURC at all. And the water utility used to be under IURC jurisdiction, but the utilities in the city opted out of IURC jurisdiction. I want to say either 1999 or 2000, I have to date with me right now, but that's a long time ago for similar reasons.
Because this is our last utility we own that's currently under IURC jurisdiction?
Yes, that's true. And 95% of other utilities are already out.
Other electric utilities?
Yes.
Ed, explain a little bit about the effect of being in IURC and the cost of transformers. You pitched a high cost to the IURC, then you threw in something about developers now or may now pay for that. Being out of the IURC allows the city to make that change itself?
No, I'd be happy to. If you were to compare us to Boon RMC, who are, they are out of the IURC. If a developer, I mean, if a company comes and moves into their territory, they have to purchase the transformer themselves. If they were in Lebanon, we would have to purchase the transformer, and we can recover some of the costs with it with an agreement where they have to provide at least a certain amount of revenue over 30 months. But in general, we're not going to recover that revenue. We could change our rule, you know, getting out of the IURC won't make that change happen automatically. But when we do our next rate study, we would change our rates to reflect what other utilities or out of the IURC do, so that if a large company comes in, we're not fronting the cost for their transformers. Because when we front the cost for those transformers for a large company, what it means is that the next rate increase, that cost, that 1.5 million dollars I mentioned before, under the IURC, that cost would have to be part of our rate case where that cost is spread out over all of our customers. But if we get out of the IURC, we're going to explore shifting some of that cost onto the the actual developer that's buying that large transformer. Does that help or make sense?
I think I was showing my skill. And so today, right, we couldn't, the City Council couldn't pass an ordinance that says, hey, now developers, you have to pay for your own transformers. That would require a full review by the IURC rate base, et cetera, et cetera. Which takes, you know, 350 to 450 days on your slide, right? Versus if we, you know, were out of the IURC theoretically, we could do that in a much quicker process to go through that, make the changes.
Yes, you said, that's exactly right. In fact, we had a great deal of debate on that amongst our board, had a board member that was wanting us to try and do it that way, but Jeff Jacob emailed their attorneys. I mean, we exhausted every option and made sure that we couldn't do that. There was just no way of being under IURC jurisdiction and to transfer those costs out of the full rate case. Yeah.
I was just going to recap for people at home. When we had our meeting, I just want to make sure that I understand this right. So the IURC is very beneficial for ratepayers when they're getting their they're getting their energy from a provider that's for profit. So the IURC goes and they review those cases and make sure that their rates aren't too high. So we don't have that. The Lebanon Utilities, we are not for profit. And there is a lot of other power that are for profit. So is that correct? That the IURC governs all of those rate changes, and they're the ones that can approve or deny them when they're doing the rate study, correct?
Yes, that's exactly right. The IURC is a great organization, and they're very beneficial when you're an investor-owned utility. Because if the investor-owned utility wanted to have a large rate increase, and it was larger than what they actually needed to spend, that money would end up leaking out in dividends to investors across the country. Whereas at Lebanon Utilities, we have a service board made up members of the community meant to keep the rates low. We have the City Council that are also very close tied to what we're doing. And if by some mistake we were to have too large of a rate increase, that money would stay with the utility. It wouldn't go out in the dividend. It would just mean that there would be a correction next time, and our rates would be because rates are always going to go up, just like inflation, the next rate increase wouldn't be as large.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody at home watching understood that part of it.
That was a great question. Thank you.
Questions for Ed? Okay, this time then, I'll open the public hearing on this recommendation from the Lebanon Utility Service Board to withdraw from the IURC jurisdiction. Speaking of public comment, please go forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments to three minutes if possible.
My name is Tom Woodson. I live at 2215 Travis Drive here in Lebanon. I received the notice with my utility bill about recommendation by the utility board to opt out of the IURC about the same time, or within a few days of reading on the front page of the newspaper that we weren't issuing any more building permits for the next 24 to 40 months because we didn't have enough water units to do that. Now, I understand from comments today that we opted out for the water a number of years ago, so the IURC didn't have any control over that. I wonder if we would be in that position today if we hadn't opted out of the IURC with regard to water. As it came, it was quite a surprise to me as somebody who wanted to build, that we couldn't do that for the next 24 to 40 months. This city is about ready to start on one of the most large development, as I understand it, in the state of Indiana. And from my perspective, avoiding oversight by an organization which is constructed to oversee, oversight, and regulate to be sure that rates are fair and reasonable, to opt out of that at the time when we're on the verge of major development in this city, doesn't seem to me to be a very good idea. It would seem to me that the more oversight we have, even if it's costly initially, and even if it's time-consuming, would be a good idea to be sure that the ratepayers in this city receive fair and reasonable rates. So I, for one, am opposed to opting out. I did talk with Aaron Smith on the utility board, and I know that he's in favor of opting out, even though years ago he wasn't. And he did tell me that the last time, I think that there was a review, and there was a cost, that the savings far exceeded the cost. And so I'm just concerned about opting out at this time. I understand that there's maybe a desire to move faster, there may be a desire to shift cost. I don't know if that thing can actually come to fruition, just shifting cost of all of these things to the developer. But I don't think that moving fast in this circumstance is necessarily of the greatest priority. I think the greatest priority is to be sure that we have fair and reasonable rates, and I think oversight would be a good idea.
Thank you, sir. Do you know where, which electric utility jurisdiction the LEAP district is in at the moment? So do you know which electric jurisdiction the LEAP district is in?
I would not.
It's in Boon RMC.
That's good.
Which is not under the IURC.
We're still on the edge of developing this city, as it was said. You know, 10 or 20 years ago, maybe we were developing slowly. Not so much now. We're developing so fast now with developments so that an individual can't get a building permit. That's how fast we develop with regard to water. I don't know what that means with utilities or the electric.
Well, the electric service territories have been frozen since 2014, so I just want to know. So whatever the city boundaries were in 2014, that's where the service territories are. So I just wanted to, I mean, to your point, I mean, I understand what your point is, and we're trying to tie two unrelated things together, but I just wanted to point that the LEAP district that you're referencing is actually not even within Lebanon Utilities jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further public comment?
Hi, my name's John Schultz. I live here in town, just on Garfield Street, just north of Pizza King. I'm actually against them wanting to leave the IURC. There's lots of reasons to leave. There's, as Ed was saying, there's labor and material costs have skyrocketed here recently, especially since the COVID pandemic. I definitely understand why they won't leave. My only concern is related to how board members are selected to the Lebanon Utility Service Board. My understanding, based on a little bit of research I did, was the City Council appoints those members. And I personally would just like to see that change to be an elected position. The reason being is, like we were saying earlier, the purpose of IURC is to protect the ratepayers. A lot of investor-owned companies, you know, they want to make sure that they're not making as much money as possible. I understand Lebanon Utilities is non-for-profit. So like Ed said, you know, you raise rates too much now, there's a decrease later on. But if, you know, thinking of my kids' generation, 20, 30 years from now, looking at, okay, was a, if wildly unpopular decision is made by Lebanon Utility Service Board, I'd rather, I'd like to have a way to enact change. And currently, with it being an appointed position, it's hard to make change when you have no way of actually electing somebody to make that change. Yeah, that's all I have on that.
Thank you for comments. Any additional public comment? Seeing no sudden movements, I'll close the public hearing. Okay, public hearing is now closed. Again, we'll have a second public hearing at our July 8th meeting as well, at the second reading of ordinance 2024-11. And we'll go into that now on this agenda for the first reading of ordinance 2024-11, and Jeff Jacob from Lebanon Utilities.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. As provided in your packets, you have ordinance 2411, which marries with the public hearing that we just had on the IURC withdrawal issue. As Ed mentioned, this comes to you from a resolution from the Utility Service Board. You're correct, sir, those are appointed positions by elected, by an elected body. So any of those decisions that come from the utility board are then approved by the elected body, the City Council. So that process is playing out before you this evening. The Utility Service Board doesn't have the authority to make that determination on its own. So we have an ordinance, a resolution, and then an ordinance recommending action, withdrawal, if you so choose. So as the mayor mentioned, we've got Phase 1 this evening, which is the first public hearing. And then this is first reading of this ordinance. And then July 8th, we would have the second public hearing, a vote at that time, and then a vote on this ordinance if you would so choose. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Jeff before the ordinance is read? We'll have Rob read the ordinance, and then we'll have questions again. Good, Rob?
Thank you, Mayor. Council ordinance 2024-11 is an ordinance withdrawing the City of Lebanon Utilities Electric Utility from the jurisdiction of the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission. This ordinance is a handful of pages, so I'll hit the highlights. But the City of Lebanon owns and operates through its Utility Service Board a municipal electric utility known as Lebanon Utilities. Whereas the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission has jurisdiction over the electric utility rates, charges, and evidence of indebtedness. On March 20th, 2024, the board adopted, the Lebanon Utility Board adopted Resolution 2024-03 recommending that this council for the City of Lebanon adopt an ordinance removing the electric utility from the jurisdiction of the IURC. The board and the utility staff operate the non-for-profit electric utility in a responsible and prudent manner, resulting in electric rates that are lower than many other Indiana for-profit electric utilities. This council and the board have operated the non-IURC regulated water and wastewater utilities using reasonable, prudent, and fair practices with equitable rate adjustments. Whereas this council recognizes pursuant to Indiana Code, the majority of municipal utilities in the state of Indiana have been removed from the jurisdiction of the IURC as to rates, charges, and evidence of indebtedness. Whereas any future proposed rate adjustment by the electric utility require adherence to Indiana state law processes and procedures, including customer protection through input at public hearings and rate adjustments approved by elected public officials. Whereas this council believes that the city and the board are capable of appropriately establishing rates and charges, determining suitable levels of indebtedness, and otherwise operating the electric utility without incurring the expense and regulatory delays associated with the IURC's jurisdictions. Over such matters, as a result of the city's growth and development, it would be beneficial to the city, the electric utility, and its ratespayers to be able to adopt its procedures, charges, and tariffs in a more efficient and effective manner. And the electric utility should be removed from the jurisdiction of the IURC. This council has conducted public hearings prior to the adoption of this ordinance. Written notice of the public hearings has been provided. Therefore, be it resolved, this council finds and determines, set forth in the preamble to this ordinance, that these findings and determinations are hereby ratified and approved. Pursuant to Indiana Code, the Lebanon Utilities is hereby withdrawn and removed from the jurisdiction of the IURC for the approval of rates and charges and the issuance of stocks, bonds, notes, and other evidence of indebtedness, and for all other matters permitted by Indiana law. This 2024-11 ordinance is hereby adopted and shall become effective 60 days from the adoption by this council and the execution of the mayor, consistent with Indiana Code.
Thank you, Rob. Now the ordinance has been read on the first reading. Is there any questions from council? Any additional public comment concerning the ordinance? Seeing none, we'll take that up for a second reading at our, again, July 8th meeting, which will be at 7:15 PM. All right, next on the agenda will be ordinance 2024-09, council to consider a vacation of unimproved right-of-way. Ben?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I'll give you a quick overview here of the vacation requests before you. This is going to look very familiar to the request that was in front of you just a couple of months ago, just a little bit further south on Elizaville Road. So here is the highlighted area in question. As you can see here, highlighted in yellow is the right-of-way. It's been public right-of-way since it was platted a number of years ago. However, it's never been used for public purpose. As you can see here, the adjacent properties are essentially using it for their personal use. We even have a lot that's back here that their driveway extends through this entire area. So not only has it not been used for public use, there is no consideration, there's no desire for public use in the future. The property behind it is owned by the schools and used by the schools. This was originally platted this way in anticipation of there being further residential development to the east behind us, and that's not, that's not the plan at this point. So there is no future public use for this property. So the process then that we would be going through is what's happening here tonight, is the vacation of the property to the adjacent property owners. And we have two segments here. There would be this western segment that would be vacated to the property owner to the north, the parks. And then this property then, as part of the vacation, would be vacated entirely to the Cross family that's here. The reason for that, as you can see where their driveways are located through this area, if it was split in half, then in essence, neither property would have access to their home from their driveway because it wouldn't be on property they could use anymore. And so in valuing with this, and then discussing with the property owners, it was determined that it would be vacated entirely to the property owners to the north. However, there will need to be an access easement that's provided on the property. I think it's intended to be 15 feet on the southern portion of this. so that the Cross family still would have access to their property from Elizaville Road. And then also the property owner to the south does have a barn that's back here, and they've got a riding lawnmower, and they want to make sure that they can be able to get that in and out using the driveway that's there as well. So it would be essentially be a three-party agreement for that access agreement to, for those, for that property. And so this is part of the actual annexation ordinance itself, identifying the two parcels that would be vacated. Again, there's one, one portion of the right-of-way that's highlighted here in yellow that would be vacated to the Parks family that owns the property to the north. And then the park portion highlighted in blue would be vacated to the Cross family that's identified north here. This was reviewed by the Plan Commission. They're, they're responsible as part of this process to provide a recommendation to the council and also review the technical aspects of this. And so they have provided a recommendation, a positive recommendation to vacate. And as part of that, in addition to the access easement that we, that I already discussed, as you can see, there is also an electric line, utility overhead line that runs north and south and bisects this, this right-of-way. So in addition to the access easement, we will also need to see an electric utility easement that's approved by Lebanon Utilities that accommodates the electric utility easement. So those, all those easements will need to be prepared and ready to be recorded before we would move forward with recording any vacation ordinance associated with the right-of-way. So those are the two, two conditions that will need to be addressed prior to recording of any vacation ordinance. And then with that, then it is an ordinance. Then there is a public hearing required this evening as part of that. And then we would take it up, the second reading and potential adoption at your next meeting on July 8th. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ben from the council?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll have Rob read it, noted the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Council ordinance 2024-09 is an ordinance by this council to vacate public ways. Whereas it's a duty and responsibility of this council to maintain the public right-of-way for the benefit of the citizens of the city and to vacate those no longer needed for the benefit of the public. There was filed before the City of Lebanon Plan Commission, docket number 24-15, to vacate a portion of unimproved street right-of-way, specifically the 50-foot unimproved Tyree Drive right-of-way between 1929 Elizaville Road and 2001 Elizaville Road. That's described as in Exhibits A, B, and C as the real estate. The Plan Commission voted 6 to 0 to send a favorable recommendation to this council for consideration. Therefore, be it resolved, this council finds pursuant to Indiana Code, the city has authority to vacate public rightsways and now finds the public right-of-way identified in Exhibits A, B, and C are no longer needed for the benefit of the public. After advertised and published public hearing pursuant to Indiana Code, this council finds it's proper and necessary to vacate the public right-of-way identified in Exhibits A, B, and C. The conveyance of the real estate described in Exhibit A shall be to the parks. And the conveyance of the real estate described in Exhibit B shall be to the Crosses. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect in accordance with Indiana law.
Ordinance has been now read on first reading. At this time, I open the public hearing on ordinance 2024-09. If you have a comment, please come forward, station near for the record, and keep comments to three minutes if possible.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Kent Franzen. I'm an attorney practicing at 225 West Main Street in Lebanon. I represent Leo and Addie Jane Hamkey, who own the house immediately to the south of this strip of land to be vacated. It's at 1929 Elizaville Road. Mr. Hamkey is here this evening. We did appear before the Plan Commission. We have no objection to the vacation of this tire drive. Based upon representations that have come to fruition, the Hamkeys do need access through that drive to get to the back of their property, just as the Crosses do. We appreciate the Parks and the Crosses working with Hamkey to come to terms under which he could use that easement as well for access or his tenants. He doesn't actually live there. He rents that house. We have an agreement on maintenance of the easement, and nobody's going to block the easement. Nobody's going to tear it up. So I think we've got an understanding. We're going to record that agreement. So it will be running not only as applicable to those folks, but it'll be running with the land, and it will apply and bind future owners of any of those three parcels, such to the terms of this agreement. So I just wanted you to know that we do have that understanding. We're going to put together when this is in final form and get it recorded. And that'll take care of it going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Franzen. Any additional public comment? This time then, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2024-09. Again, we'll take that up at our next meeting for a second reading on our July 8th meeting at 7:15 PM. All right, next item up, ordinance 2024-10, council to consider annexation of 1350 Middle Jamestown Road. This ordinance is on first reading. Ben?
All right, this item before you tonight is a 100% voluntary annexation of 288 acres that you'll see identified here on the aerial photography. It's on both sides of Middle Jamestown Road, a majority of it being on the west side and adjacent to the existing city limits on this north boundary and adjacent to the existing Lebanon Business Park. The property due north, right, that you see right in here is actually our regional detention facility. And then Ken's Foods owns this, this piece that's directly south of their existing facility. And they do have plans for expansion that would extend onto this site. The application was, for this annexation, was filed by New Cold on behalf of the property owners. And New Cold is evaluating this site for expansion capabilities, not necessarily attached expansion to their existing, because we've got some flood plan that runs through there. But they are looking at doing some additional investment on this site, which they will talk about here in a moment. In terms of process, the first step in the process for an annexation is it is presented to the Plan Commission. And the Plan Commission provides a recommendation to the council on the zoning district to assign to the annexed territory if the council were to adopt the annexation ordinance. The process the Plan Commission does in terms of identifying a zoning district is they review the comprehensive plan and a future land use map, and then also review any potential plans, conceptual plans, presented by the petitioner for the site that might support some zoning district that they would request as part of that concept. So that's, that's what actually I have for you here, is this is highly conceptual. This is not a finalized site plan. This is not something that's been approved by our office. This is just a conceptual plan of how they might envision developing this site primarily on the west side of Middle Jamestown Road with the facility. They have shown some potential for some existing or for some additional parking on the east side of the road. There's no plans for that currently. This is subject to change as they further evaluate the site. They've not completed all due diligence. Frankly, they haven't even committed to doing a project on this site at all. First step, though, is getting it annexed so that it would be part of city and we can evaluate zoning. And if and or when they decide to move forward the project, it would go through our zoning process. Again, just to reemphasize, this is an annexation, 100% voluntary annexation only. This is not an approval of a site plan. There is still a vigorous process that would be necessary after the property is annexed to evaluate the site, determine what buffers would be necessary, what landscaping would be necessary, how the building would look, how the parking would look, all that good stuff, and make sure it meets our ordinance. So this, this is, this does not guarantee them of any approval to start building. That would take place at a later time. This is merely an annexation that would get it into our zoning jurisdiction so we could have those conversations with them. Technically, right now, if we were to attempt to discuss the development plan with them, we don't have jurisdiction on that site. So we, we're not in a position to be able to do that now or commit them to anything now because it's not in our jurisdiction. Thus the reason we need to get the property annexed so we can start having those discussions with them at the appropriate time. So again, this is a property that they're, they're envisioning developing it as additional industrial uses similar to the business park and similar to their existing development. And the Plan Commission has evaluated this and sent a unanimous recommendation for the light industrial, LI, zoning district for the entire site upon annexation. And that is part of the draft ordinance that was presented to you all last week. And again, this is a process that now requires a first reading of an annexation ordinance tonight and a required public hearing. And then actually, we are going to skip a meeting because the fiscal plan is a little bit more complex in this case. And we're going to give Baker Tilly a little bit more time to complete that fiscal plan and get it in your hands before the, the meeting. And so we'll wait for the second reading for the July 22nd council meeting. We won't do it at the next meeting on July 8th. So we will hold the first reading and require public hearing that was noticed tonight. And then we will have the second reading and a consideration of fiscal plan on the July 22nd meeting rather than July 8th. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. And again, as I said, the representatives from New Cold here, they can talk a little bit about their potential and intentions with this site.
Questions for Ben this time?
No, sir.
Okay. Rob, can you read the ordinance in a moment here?
Thank you, Mayor. Council ordinance 2024-10 is an ordinance concerning the annexing a certain territory to the City of Lebanon. Whereas 100% of the owners of the parcels proposed for annexation, identified in Exhibits A and B, defined as the annexation area, have filed a voluntary petition with this council pursuant to Indiana Code. The City of Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission held a public hearing at its regularly scheduled meeting on June 17th, 2024, and forwarded docket 24-19 to this council with a favorable recommendation, 6 to 0, to assign the light industrial zoning classification for the annexation area. This council has conducted a public hearing on June 24th, 2024, as required by law. This council has adopted a fiscal plan for the annexation, the annexation area in accordance with Indiana law. The annexation area meets the contiguity requirements pursuant to Indiana law. Therefore, this council finds that the annexation area, generally located on the north side of West 200 South and both the west and east sides of Middle Jamestown Road and adjacent to the existing corporate limits along the northern boundary of the annexation area, are declared annexed to and declared to be a part of the City of Lebanon. The annexation areas to further include the contiguous public highways and right-aways pursuant to Indiana law and is assigned council district 2. It is also assigned light industrial zoning classification and shall be in full force and effect pursuant to Indiana law.
Thank you, Rob. Ordinance 2024-10 has been read on first reading. At this time, I open the public hearing on this ordinance. If you have a comment, please come forward, station near for the record, and keep comments to three minutes if possible. Yep.
My wife's doing a little translation because I'm having a hard time understanding your little muffle back here. So I apologize here. But first, let me introduce myself. My name is Greg Buchanan. I live at 1865 West 200 South, right adjacent to the proposed annexation. And I'm here supporting delaying this annexation at this time. In other words, I'm requesting that the docket 24-19 be taken out of consideration for a while to allow for more time to collectively designing a proper buffer zone between the proposed light industrial zone and the residential area. Properly designed buffer zone could prevent serious devaluation and other undesirable conditions with regards to protecting residential areas adjacent to proposed light industrial zone. Now, in an outside review that we had completed of the potential plans presented by the Director of City Planning last week, a professional property analyst clearly validates, I think, what we all know to be true. There will be a devaluation of residential property in the modest to severe range. This range of devaluation typically falls in the 10% to 25% range or possibly higher. Now, based on the Indiana State Property Evaluations, the three homes on the West 200 South adjacent to this proposed light industrial zone proposal would create a devaluation to three families, residents there likely be in excess of $475,000. In other words, the light industry rezoning, commercial business expansion, the city is asking three residents of Lebanon, Indiana, to contribute hundreds of thousands of dollars of owned assets to this project. Now, how for a single moment can this be anything reasonable to consider? Here are some of the other factors that continue to carry a huge concern to all and part is reflected back to the residential property devaluation, but it's not limited to. And that is the roads and intersections are incapable of handling the expected high traffic of semi-trucks and light and noise pollution, air quality control, and continued radio interference, and also the inability to maintain the safety of the local residents due to the listed items above. But I'm also here today to share my appreciation and gratitude to Nick Santora and his development team from New Cold for reaching out to the residents most affected to discuss possible ideas and how best to address many of these concerns in the days and the weeks ahead. Now, I also would like to note that it is a requirement to provide a buffer zone strategy that would protect affected residents from new commercial zones like in cities such as Brownsburg and Zionsville. And the reason I mention that, if you would take time to check Creekside Corporate Park in Zionsville, it's a prime example of developing a buffer zone that has provided success for both residents and commercial properties to coexist. So I'm here today to ask, take a pause, pause to, put a pause in this reclassification to this area to convert it to a light commercial zone. We can and should make this a transparent development and as a joint mission to seek out a better solution for all sides. I appreciate you giving me time today to speak my piece. Thank you.
Thank you for comments, sir. Any additional public comment?
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the city council, good evening. My name is Nick Santoro, representing the petitioner here, New Cold Logistics. Yeah, just wanted to provide some additional context to our request for this annexation as well as to show support for, for our team, for this project. We have been a member of the community here since approximately 2019, when we first went under contract on our site within the Lebanon Business Park. We, in 2022, went live with our first phase of our development there, which is 100,000 pallet positions in an automated warehouse, approximately $200 million of investment. We employ 125 Indianans, many resident within Lebanon. And we generate significant tax revenues above $2 million, I believe, for that site. Later on this summer, we will be going live with Phase 2 of our development there, which is another 100,000 pallet positions, creating one of the largest temperature-controlled logistics campuses on the planet, employing another 125 people and contributing yet more tax revenues to Lebanon. We would be really excited and would humbly request that this annexation proceed currently. We don't have, as Director Bontrager pointed out, we don't have a, a final site plan. We have only a very conceptual draft. And we do need the next step from, from this council to move forward in continuing to diligence, continuing to grow in the community. Thanks very much for the kind words of, of Mr. Buchanan and Mrs. Buchanan. New Cold deigns to be the, the best development partner we can with the local communities. Our commitment is to abide by all the ordinances that Lebanon requires for our development as it pertains to their properties being nearby. And we also commit to working with them individually on, on site plan concerns that they may have once we do have a, a final site plan. But we are too early on in that process, and we would request that we move forward so we can continue to develop an eventual final site plan. Thank you.
Any further public comments? All right, seeing so, no sudden movements, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2024-10. Again, we'll take that up at our, not our next meeting, but our- Again, we'll take that up at our, not our next meeting, but our meeting after that, which will be July 22nd at 7:15 PM. Okay, next up will be Resolution 2024 dash 12. It's just an additional appropriation request for Engineering Professionals Personal Services. Kevin Krillik?
Thank you very much. I think everyone's familiar with this. You've heard this before regarding some conversations we've, we've all had with budgets and personnel issues. So this is the resolution before you, 2024 dash 12, is to increase funding for the hiring of a project manager, to put someone in a project manager position, replacing a position that was previously funded out of the non-reverting planning fund. And, and Savannah Soldier held that position before taking her current position to go to the city of Noblesville. So this is, uh, this is the appropriation that would create the, the salary for this position for the last six months of the year. Total is $50,000. The salary would be an annual salary of $75,000. So with benefits and, and other, other expenses associated with an employee that would typically be about $100,000 a year. Given the fact we're six months through the year, this appropriation request is for an additional $50,000 to put someone in this position. And obviously, as we get into budget season, this would become a permanent position in the planning department, or excuse me, the engineering department.
Questions for Kevin at this time?
No, sir.
Did you say you were requesting it for the non-reverting or for the general fund?
It's general, yeah.
It, it was previously in the non-reverting, and so this is to put it fully in the general going forward. Last time, it was kind of split between planning and engineering. And then now that's to be a full-time engineering, which is different than the planning, non-reverting fund.
The non-reverting fund, and, and Ben could speak more to this, but it's, it's, the money that was previously in the non-reverting fund is, is being used to fund other positions that are needed within the planning department. So this, the position of project manager, which was funded out of the planning department, was primarily used by the engineering department. And so that's why we think it's appropriate to add this position to the engineering department.
Questions for Kevin?
No, sir.
Rob?
I make a motion we approve resolution.
Hold on, we got to read the resolution first.
Thank you for your enthusiasm.
I know you've seen it. We got to actually officially read it.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Council, Resolution 2024 dash 12 is a resolution for additional appropriation. Whereas it's the duty and responsibility of this council to maintain fiscal integrity of the finances of the city. At times, it becomes necessary to appropriate additional funds within the approved budget as contemplated and authorized by Indiana law. It has been determined it's necessary to, now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget. Additional appropriations require a public hearing, of which this council served proper notice. Resolution 2024 is to appropriate funds for Engineering Personal Services. It will be, additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of Fund 11, 1,001, 1101, General Engineering, in the amount of $50,000.
Thank you, Rob. As the resolution states, there is a public hearing associated with this resolution. So this time, I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2024 dash 12. Any public comment, please come forward, station name for the record, and keep comments to three minutes if possible. No sudden movements, I will close the public hearing on Resolution 2024 dash 12. Any additional discussion or comments from council? What, entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion we approve Resolution 2024 dash 12.
We have motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Rob. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed? That resolution is adopted. Thank you, council. All right, next up, Resolution 2024 dash 13, which is additional appropriation for, from the Lit Fund for Police and Fire. Kevin?
Thank you very much. Again, Resolution 2024 dash 13 is an additional fund for additional money appropriated out of Fund 2240, which is the, the Lit Fund or the Public Safety Lit Fund, Police and Fire Lit. And this is associated with, with projects that you've tasked me with executing that we need to fund. So these include the fire department's rooftop replacement project, which with contingency is, is a budget of approximately $82,500. The LPD sewer repairs, the sub-slab sewer repairs in the police department, which with contingencies totals 68,500. And so those together are what total the capital outlay, capital outlay, excuse me, line, line 4,000 for $151,000. And then the other line for 27,500 is associated with the police department's building needs assessment study that is being conducted. So again, these are, these are additional funding requests to fund projects and planning efforts associated with the police and fire projects.
Any questions on that for Kevin at this time? Counsel? Okay, Rob, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Resolution 2024 dash 13, again, is for an additional appropriation. At times, it becomes necessary to appropriate additional funds within the approved budget as contemplated and authorized under Indiana law. It has been determined it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget. Additional appropriations require a public hearing. Therefore, be it resolved by this council that Resolution 2024 dash 13 is to appropriate funds for the Lit Fire Capital Outlay, Lit Police Services and Charges and Capital Outlay from the Fund 2240 Lit Police and Fire in the amount of $178,500.
Okay, thank you, Rob. This time, we'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2024 dash 13. Any public comment, please come forward, station name for the record, and keep comments to three minutes if possible. Done, I will close the public hearing on Resolution 2024 dash 13. Any further discussion, comments from council?
Make a motion we approve. Resolution 2024.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second from John. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed? That resolution is adopted. Thank you, council. All right, that concludes what I have for new business. Anything from council? No? Any general public comment? Okay, we want to claims, and we entertain a motion concerning the claims. Motion to pay the claims, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mike. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed? All right, we entertain, any announcements or discussion? Okay, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, and a second from Keith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed? Okay, our next city council meeting will be July 8th at 7:15 PM. We are adjourned.